All right, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This will be a regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona that's being held on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 at 7:02 PM in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Johnny Giacomo.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mal Sui.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna-Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Jim Richardson, Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you. For the first order of business, moment of silence, we've got some really sad news tonight and I want us to thank, we heard that Albert Hopper, our architect, apparently was on his bicycle up on, somewhere on June Platts and they found him passed away up there, deceased. And it's pretty new news, we don't know exactly everything about it, but I just, I'm feeling really sad, I actually worked with him less than three weeks ago at my house, actually, he was doing something for me and, you know, he's as fit as a fiddle and so it's, and besides for his family and everybody else, I, I'm just wanting us to take a good moment and, he gave, he really, he really loved the city and wanted to do things for us and always did a lot for Cochise County as a whole, so, let's take a few moments and think about that. Thanks. Okay, let's say your pleas of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight I have a proclamation and I'm very proud to read this tonight, this is a proclamation for Employee Appreciation Week. This is from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, so whereas city employees make a significant contribution to ensure the chartered course for Bisbee is implemented, and whereas city employees are dedicated public servants who perform their duties with professionalism and commitment to those they serve, and whereas the importance of public service provided by public employees and volunteers is too often forgotten and ignored, whereas it is appropriate to designate the week of October 16th through the 22nd, 2022, as City Employee Recognition Week, to honor and recognize all public employees and remind the citizens of Bisbee of the importance of public service. And whereas during the week of recognition, we recognize the hardworking men and women of the City of Bisbee and give them our thanks and recognition and recognize their commitment to providing the highest, most efficient level of service, whereas the City of Bisbee is honored to join the Arizona Cities of Leagues and Towns, extending their appreciation and gratitude to all public employees for their continued dedication. And so now therefore, being resolved that I, Ken Budge, Mayor of the City of Bisbee, do hereby join with the League of Cities and Towns and following municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 16th through 22nd, City Employee Recognition Week. And I just want to say thank you, city employees, without you, what are we doing up here? All right, uh, call the public. I have, did you want to speak to call the public or when your item, if it comes up for the motorcycles?
Yeah, whenever it comes up.
Okay, you don't have the agenda item on here, so if it gets pulled or maybe I'll ask you to speak at that point if it's necessary. Okay, thanks. All right, moving on to, oh, first, before we do general business, I'd like to ask the council without objection to remove council item number seven. We're gonna look into that further, so I'm gonna remove that from this item without objection from anybody on the council. All right, so item seven will be removed for tonight. Thank you. So, general business, accounts payable, the motion.
My move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $205,422.92, subject to availability of funds.
All right, have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, to approve accounts payable. Questions?
Have you?
Okay.
And quick, just clarification, yeah. On page three, under operational expenses, I just want to clarify on some, I think they must have gone to the same account, single key made, batteries, and then we go to car wash and supplies for kids, hats, is this, what is it, can someone clarify this because I didn't understand what this is for?
It's fire prevention for, when we go to the schools, we teach fire prevention at all the elementary schools.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good.
Little plastic hats.
Okay, that's good, we just, I just say, you know, supplies for kids, okay. One more quick clarification, page six, I think, and that's $39,400. I know, we do business with the E and J Construction, I just want clarification, is this for a month, for which area, and $39,400, I mean, is this ongoing or it's a specific?
Do you remember the catch basin that was put in?
Yeah.
That's what, that's it.
Okay, very good.
We approved.
Wow, quick, thank you. You guys ready tonight?
What else?
No, no, one more, one more.
Oh, you said one, wait a minute, you said it was done.
No, 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 I didn't say it was done. Okay, I, I, I think I will be clarified quickly, the Office of Tourism Expenditure, we have two digital billboards, one for $2,500 and one for $5,000. Where these billboards, were they at, Bisbee?
You are on page?
Uh, nine.
It's at the top.
At the top.
Two billboards.
Yeah, we approved the digital billboards that are out and basically finished, if I'm correct.
And these what, basically promote Bisbee?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, maybe you can send us some pictures of those, I'd like to see how good they look.
I, every time I go up there, I keep trying to catch them, I just need one of ours.
Maybe you know who's doing this, you can send us some photos, so we'll see.
Judge?
Yeah.
Tell me where the?
No, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, maybe.
Part of this was paid for with?
Yeah.
With a grant.
Yeah, I know, I'm aware of that, yeah, it says that, there's no problem with this.
We could probably get Heather to get it scheduled for Mayot.
Okay, that'd be good, I'd like to see how good they look, just.
You just go get barley, she'll go up there, by the way.
Okay, and this was just for Bisbee and Napa Auto Parts, city operation expense for scanner, $5,5478, on page nine, too. Scanner, what's that?
For the bus.
Okay.
Yeah, it says for the bus, but I just, is this repair, it's a?
It was for, the Bisbee bus through a grant, but it was not, it will be returned, it was not, the paperwork, we didn't get the receipt in time and they had, for it to be approved by the grant, we had to have the receipt in a certain time and we didn't receive that receipt, the invoice from them, so it'll be going back.
Also, we'll get that money, we'll be reimbursed. Okay.
We'll be trying next year and, yeah.
Okay, so, for now, we'll pay until we get the money back?
Yep.
Okay, all right, it's not gonna affect the budget or anything, is it?
No, that was coming out of the grant anyways.
Okay, 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 I'm done.
All right, now I can ask, anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $205,422.92. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. The ayes have it, so move. Moving on to the consent agenda, we've got items A through H, we've got approval of two minutes for October 4th, we have four more permits for extension of premise permit for Electric Brewing, this is C, D, E, and F, we have one G, which is approval for a permit for the Brewery Gulch for a proud, for a proud event on March 17th, and finally, an approval for a special liquor license for the Bisbee Council Arts and Humanities Saturday, October 29th. Anyone want anything pulled, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda as listed.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, as shown, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. Very none, ayes have it. Under all business, this is again, discussion possible approval of our United States Postal Service, I've been informed that, I've been asked to table this again, I don't, the 6th or to the 20th of December?
To the, to the 20th, I received an email late Friday from the post office's.
Your workup.
Yeah, there, there was, from their lease manager and this is what I received, that they are currently completing an assessment internally with their quote inspection service, service security specialist, who's reviewing the need for security cameras at this location, so.
So I make a motion, table this, at least until December 20th, if they give us an answer by the 6th, they could bring it back, if not, we'll have to move on to the 20th. I have a second on the table.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table item three for the lease on the old Bisbee post office, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. Very none, chair moves, ayes have it. All right, now we get some good stuff, new business. And this item four is discussion and consideration of the Hillcrest bids and relation of the affordable housing, Mr. Pocken, and eventually.
Yes, thank you everyone and good evening, this is further to our conversation at the last council meeting regarding the sale of the Hillcrest apartment property, and you'll notice that your CAF did not have anything behind it, didn't want to kill as many trees as we've been killing with the post office every two weeks, and you already had that information in your package the last time. As, as you will recall, we promised to go back and talk to the two entities again to perhaps get more information, and I believe from the conversation at the last meeting that the only real concern on part of the council was the carryback of $250,000 for two years, excuse me, 20 years and 2%. So, after the meeting, we asked them for another meeting, Melissa and I met with them again the following day, and lo and behold, we were able to get, by methods that I'm still not entirely sure, the carryback reduced to 100,000 for 18 years at 2%. Okay, so what that means is that you will now, after they successfully receive the tax credits on June 1st of next year, then we will be able to proceed towards closing and you will receive a check for $600,000 and then a note to carry back 100,000 for 18 years at 2%. As per the ordinance that governs the sale of surplus property, that 100,000 at 2% for 18 years would be paid into Fund 99, which is your capital improvements fund, that's what the ordinance says, so it will not get so-called lost in the general fund as we've been accused of doing in the past. And that's the very reason we set up Fund 99 so many years ago, so that you had traceable evidence of where your capital improvement money was. So, now, knowing that and, and knowing that there were really no other huge concerns on part of mayor council, what we were, what we are recommending tonight is that, without your objection, we would be able to proceed with negotiating an agreement with what will be Bisbee Lofts LLC for the sale of the Hillcrest property at 700,000. And we will bring that, of course, we'll have to bring that contract back to you for approval once it's negotiated.
So, be more than happy if you would go ahead and continue to negotiate and bring that contract, or not negotiate anymore, but bring the contract back as presented. Discussion?
Well, the only, I had one issue last time, and thank you for going back and renegotiating the 200,000, I think you guys did a good job. My only concern, and we need to make sure it's in the contract, the water issue, because it says we're responsible to, and we want to make sure this is clarified, that we're not responsible for this, the water company is, so I don't want, maybe if the water company comes in later, well, we're not gonna do the lines, then we end up doing this, I just wanna make sure that's clarified, they are responsible for water, not us. Okay, that's, that would be my, my, my point.
I see my city attorney making that note right now.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's the one issue I have.
Okay, any other comment or, or concerns? Seeing none, well, I'm really in a motion, I'm just going to say thank you and let's move forward and bring us back a full, full contract before the, I think it's the 30th that we have to have it, or else, November 30th.
We'll be back well before November 30th. So, and thank you all, this has been a, it's been a journey, hopefully we're seeing the end of the journey coming, and we'll, we'll look forward to getting this thing done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, number five, this is a discussion on possible approval of a permanent extension of premise and patio permit application submitted by Electric Brewing at 1326 West Highway 92, Suite Number Eight. As you know, we continue to give a lot of temporary permits, week after week, this would be extending it, and what this would entail would be them putting up a metal fence type situation between some posts, as it's shown on, in your packet. I'll be honest, I've gone back and forth on this more than once because I just wanna make sure the handicap situation was handled, and they changed the design in order to, as you, if you see the new listing they have here, it shows the handicap parking space and they were showing that there was three feet in front of, of their parking where they would, they would now allow a handicap person to go over to the laundromat or, or somewhere else down that long hall area towards the computer store or whatever. So, I'll be honest, it wasn't until today, because I had, this is the day I had time, so I'm gonna pass this out, I went and drove by far up onto that, onto that parking pad, mine is not a big SUV, it's a pretty small one actually, and what we, what I had, now I didn't put my back wheel right on the edge of the up ramp, I just kind of caught up there and felt where I was, I was normal, I had 27 inches between that and this post, if you look in your, in your, in your, so obviously, the only way I'd ever prove this is this post that they have that lists the sign has gotta be cut to nothing, then you might be able to get the 30, 36 inches to get by the front of your vehicle in order to get on there. I still have a bit of a problem in respect that, if you have a vehicle that's a van or something bigger than mine, I don't know if you're gonna have the 36 inches, and by looking at the, at the requirements, so a city attorney showed me, to have a handicap spot, it needs to be 20 feet in depth, I measured it today at 17, to the, to the edge of where it ramps up, so, so you can level your car, so, so they're actually three feet short on that. I'm, I'm tired of this, I don't want to, if you guys want to go ahead and, and say, okay, cut the post down and, and we'll live with it, I'm fine, but I'm, I'm just telling you what I, I do my due diligence and I, I was out of the county today actually to submit my, my votes, and so I just thought, I'll, I'll drive up there and measure, so I did.
Well, I was gonna say, if they cut that post down, move the sign over onto the.
They're proposing to put it onto their, onto their.
Or onto the fence.
Yeah.
And they didn't, somebody a long time ago made that ramp there, so it's not, there really wasn't.
Their design.
They're doing, that somebody could pull up there, level up, get out, you know, move it back if they had to.
My question is, can that be extended? Because this is definitely ADA violations if it's left of that, because you have to have those 20 feet and you're not gonna have it, and if it's passed, then you're gonna have that issue of them not being able to get through, because again, yours is a small car, if that could be extended out farther, that would alleviate that, that cutoff, because the other issue is you, you were kind enough to stop right there, what happens when other people pull all the way up and they're gonna end up blocking it, because there's no, what other way is it gonna stop, does that make sense? Like, is there gonna be a bumper curb to keep them from proceeding farther than that?
Now, some of the issues we will deal with, with this approval, like they're gonna put fences between the posts, so if you look at the picture of those, this post, that's where the fence, that's where the fence is gonna be located.
Back at the post.
And this is what you were getting, if you look at the, that's the post, there's both in that post, and if you look at the other one.
So that gives them the three feet.
Barely, just, yeah, on my car.
Right.
So, I don't, I'm just bringing this all up for discussion.
And if this thing, if that was removed, that would extend, I mean, that could be extended, yeah, if that's taken out, then that would even get more.
No, that, that, because this, they're gonna, will have an opening between here and they're gonna be able to go through there.
Oh, so it's gonna be like right here?
Yeah, if you look at the design and they designed it, because before they were gonna, you were gonna have to actually go through the, where they were serving beer in order to do it, through the two other areas, so they moved it around and it looked, oh, that looks good, and then I, I just thought, well, just make sure, see if it's there, and I drove, so, the new.
It seems like it could be workable, you know, barely, but if, if that parking area could be extended out, but I don't know who's responsible for doing that.
Well, it'd be the whole group, it'd be the entire, so here we are, you can see it's wider back here than it is here, and this is the three feet they're giving to get a wheelchair through, but, but if you park here, you gotta come around the front and get through that three feet, so, that's, that's, that was my issue, coming across the front of the car, I really think, you know, it's, if you approve it, we'll, we'll, we'll be with, you know, it's like we're make, we have the ultimate decision on what to go, so it's.
Mayor?
Yeah.
You could also approve it conditioned upon the parking meeting the ADA requirements. There, there does seem to be sufficient room to be able to extend that parking to make sure you have the 20 feet, have a, a non-stop concrete parking barrier to keep vehicles from going into the three feet access, and then the access area would be hash marked just like it is on the handicap aisle access, because ADA requires you to have hash marks from the handicap spot to the entrance area of the, of the building and those areas, those hash ma, hash marked areas are, are governed just like the, the parking is, you can't park in the hash, hash marked areas and stuff because that is the.
Blocking access.
That's the access route.
So, since they share the park lot with the other tenants, are we suggesting that Electric Brewing extend this parking?
All we're saying, these are the requirements and how they do it, whether it be everybody or they themselves, will be up to that, to me, that's, would be their rule, because this, this handicap spot services the whole concept, complex, I should say, not just the, not just Electric Brewing, I just wanna make sure that this handicap spot is fully accessible if, if these, these metal, you know, railings go in to cordon off this area, that's what they show in the red on your, on your.
So those, so right now, this spot is, since it's been there for so long, is really in violation of?
It could be, it wasn't, it wasn't designed, but it's grandfathered in kind of now, I guess, but, but as far as, now we're changing its, its usage in a different way, so.
And actually, that hasn't been there all that long.
Hasn't, I didn't know.
No, that's.
You're, you're the war three.
Yeah, that, that, in fact, I don't even remember, you know, when it came in, but it hasn't been all that long, because when I would go to the laundromat, I would usually, you know, park in the back when I had to, you know, go up there, sometimes in the front, but it hasn't been all that long, but we really have no choice but to make sure that it is ADA compliant. My question is, I mean, I don't mind the extension of premises, but why, why does there have to be a permanent fencing? I mean, I kinda like the open.
Yeah, the permanent fencing is for liquor control, so they have control.
It's required for liquor.
Defined area.
So for the, for permanent extensions.
It was temporary, yes.
Okay, well, that's, okay.
That was my guess.
Ms. Fredrickson is here, representing the Electric Brewing.
Sure. I can answer questions.
Absolutely, come on.
If you want me to.
Give that. I mean, it's your permit, we wanna try and make it happen, we just wanna make sure we're in compliance when we do so.
I understand that, I just feel like you had some questions that I knew the answers to.
Okay, how long's the handicap thing been there?
When the veterinarian moved in, he was required to put that in, I'm not sure who required him, but he put that in. I don't have to pay for it, but he did.
I mean, I didn't, if you'd like, you can see the picture of what we're dealing with, I mean.
If I had thought that it was not a very good ramp myself.
Well, once you get up there.
It was there when I moved in.
Once you get up there on the top, it's fine, it's pretty level and so on, it's just not deep enough to be able to get a car and then get three feet in front in order to get around. Your redesign was great, I thought, oh wow, this will meet, because you don't have to go through your, through your designated, you know, new bar area, but if it, but if it isn't deep enough, it's just not deep enough, so.
I don't, it was, oh, I'm sorry, do you have the possibility of extending it though? That's, I guess. Never thought of doing that, I just thought that it was gonna be fine, it was already fine, and we're not making it harder for anyone than it already is by redesigning it the way we did, and Joe Ward suggested we put one of those cement, whatever they're called, barriers to keep people from going, and we're gonna cut down that one hole and put the sign on.
Yeah, the pole absolutely has to go, but that gained you about a foot, is what it does, so I figured, okay, if the pole's gone, but if you get a, by compliance, according to state law, it's.
Federal law.
Federal law, it's 20 feet, it needs to, so when it was originally designed, they, they counted the ramp part, I guess, that went down like this as part of the 20 feet, and really you got that flat 20 feet, so, that's, that's the, that's the crux of it.
Which is what, three feet more, is that the?
Yeah, I measured it today, it's 17, so you would need at least three more feet before, and then have the.
I know, I never have read that, I just assumed that it was to code.
Yeah, I, I understand, I'm not blaming you, it's, it's just if we approve it and then somebody parks there and it's, and they can't get the wheelchair in front because it's a van versus a small SUV, then.
It might currently be to code, but we're taking three feet from the, from the front of that parking area and utilizing that for access.
We're not actually, well, for access.
You have to have three feet of access, so you have to have an aisleway access of minimum of three feet, so if you're taking, whether it's two feet by removing the post or, or whatever, you're, you're still, you're taking some of the front of that parking space and required to use. and required to use that for now an access aisle, which reduces the length of that parking space.
I see. So, in front of our fence, you need to be able to have three feet of regular vehicles.
Right. So, for ADA access, you have to have thirty-six inches of, of aisleway access for that, for wheelchairs.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, the new design's fine, once they get past the front of the car, you have thirty-six inches and get on to the, to the, there's a big walkway all the way down, you know, for the whole thing, so. As far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to pass it with as long as it meets the new, the ADA code of, of having that three feet and having a barrier so that stops and then a normal car, you know what it is from the front wheel to the front bumper, they don't, you know, I don't know exactly, but you can work with Joe on that, but.
It'll be novel.
Yeah, it's not much different. Wheelbases do change, you know, there's, there's long, long wheels bases, shorter wheelbases. Mine's pretty short, but, but um, so, that's the way I was just, I don't.
What, how, how wide is that spot?
Well, it's plenty wide.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking dimensions, it's a matter of throwing down a pad that's three feet.
They just gotta extend it out where it bumps up, you just gotta go.
Which could be some lengthwise.
Yeah, lengthwise, not width.
Yeah, well, if you, if you do it lengthwise too, you have to do it for the whole thing.
Well, there's guidelines for that slope too.
Right.
So, as long as they meet the new guy, I mean, because it's being redefined, I just wanna have it be the appropriate um, situation, so.
So, so basically, as long, Mayor, so as long as what the attorney said, as long as they follow the guideline, meet the guideline and Joe will, will ensure once they're done that they have fulfilled this, I think we should be okay with it.
Yeah. So, I think. I don't mind extension. I might rather do that than have these come before, so we're over, and you don't have to fill out a million papers, so.
So, is there gonna be a deadline in which that extension has to be completed?
They may not, never complete it and then that's their choice, that's, I don't mind.
Well, if it's gonna be a permanent, that's what I'm saying.
Well, they can't use it until.
They can't use it until.
Well, that, that was.
Oh, I thought you meant, deadline.
So, yeah.
So, then would it be better to just wait until conditions are met and then that way we know they're met and then? I mean, I don't know.
I believe we can do that administratively. Just gonna go through the.
We just approve it and then you can do it.
So, well, I'll put my faith in our staff that they'll come up and, and with those the guidelines.
I'm putting my faith in this one.
But, you know, my point still is, is there gonna be a title which used to be completed? Because, you know, we're gonna be five years old, well, we're still working on it.
Well, they can't, they can't, they can't put the extension of premise in until this is done.
Okay, that was my, that was it.
On condition, imagine premise can go in condition, the condition of the handicap parking space. I make a motion that we approve resolution, I'm sorry, that we approve the, the permanent extension of premise on the condition that the handicap parking space will have a fully uh,
ADA.
ADA compliant, three feet in front of wherever a car's front bumper is and, and to the length as per ADA rules.
Exactly.
I don't know, I'll just say.
Okay, that's good. At least, I'm, I'm not actually, I don't have to interpret it.
You should have to re-speak then. Call me, no.
Okay, gotcha, I, I have you recorded, so.
And we have a motion in a second to approve the permanent extension uh, with meeting ADA accessible guidelines for distances. How's that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it, so move, thank you. Hope that works for you. All right, um, we are on to number six, this is discussion of possible approval of resolution R D S twenty-two eighteen. The resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee approving the transfer of budget funds within the city of Bisbee fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Our finance director.
Um, Mayor and Council, this is the um, transfers, um, the fiscal year twenty-two budget transfers. Um, moving money, not money, budgeted numbers from departments that had um, some access to a few departments that um, over expended. And for the general fund, we just took it out of contingency and um, for the other fund that was mostly out of miscellaneous grants to cover the ARPA fund that was set up. Any questions?
Look at the numbers, questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
Just clarification. Uh, I'll, I'll make a, a, a small statement then I will, I will ask about the numbers. I mean, we are too early into the, into the year to have gone over some of these budgeted numbers. I believe we should be, should be close to numbers. But I would like clarification on a couple of numbers and why we did not anticipate a budget first. For example, when you said Mayor and Council over expended by three thousand eight hundred and fourteen, your explanation was because of Zoom meetings and we had, you know, we've been doing Zoom meetings since two, uh, twenty-twenty. Why didn't we anticipate that we're gonna be expending uh, money on Zoom meetings?
Well, this was a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget and I think we were still having some Zoom meetings at that time and I, we still have a monthly Zoom.
Just to clarify now, this is the last fiscal year, this is not the current fiscal year. This is the one that's over.
Okay, so, but, but we doing the transfer now, you, she's, you come here to, so you can balance the budget for, for last year?
Well, we're not balancing the budget, we're just, we're, we're moving budget numbers so that they all.
Yeah, balance, I, I, yeah, I, I just want to say clarification, it's not, I'm, I'm not.
That's all it is.
Yeah, so basically, uh, but my, my question still, uh, Mr. Manager, is they, is, uh, I mean, we've had Zoom meeting since two-twenty. My question is just so we learn from this, why did not we anticipate, why did we go over budget because she said it was due to Zoom meetings? That's all.
Well.
Because this is twenty-one and we started Zoom meeting, you knew.
Well, my belief was that we were gonna stop doing them a long.
Okay, so I just want an explanation, that, that's all. So, now we know that something, okay, that's it.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, wait, my screen went out, I'm sorry.
You're done, your screen went out.
Okay. Uh, I have, you have also, and uh, this is on personnel, we've overextended by five, fifteen thousand four hundred, uh, fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars nearly for investigative services. Can you elaborate a little bit on this?
You bet.
That's a, it's a big number.
Um, you will recall that there was a, a, an incident of, and, and allegations, credible allegations of sexual harassment uh, that occurred in the Bisbee Fire Department. Of course, our first inclination is to try and get a cooperating local agency to help us with that type of investigation. Because typically, we don't investigate ourselves, we ask somebody else to do it. All of the area uh, government agencies declined and so we had to go to the private sector. And the private sector, as you can see, was extremely expensive. What we anticipate is that one of our neighbors will help us. In this case, none of our neighbors helped us, so we had to go to the private sector.
Well, thank you for the clarification. Last one, I promise. On the housing initiative, that was a big number too, forty, a forty-seven thousand hundred and six dollars. I mean, the explanation, I read the explanation, when the budget was developed, it's estimated how much is needed. But, uh, I mean, and, but then you said in this, in this new, in this new project, there was not a lot of history. Basically, when, and this is my concern, so we can learn from this in the future. Uh, you don't need history, you need to know how much things cost, so when you go in and doing those repair, I mean, don't we take that into consideration? How much things are gonna cost, rather than say based on history? Sometime you have to base on actually what we do. I just want to know how, how is this done and what happened?
Can I, can I now, can I talk to that?
Go right, okay.
So, you have to understand.
I'm asking, I'm not asking you, I'm not there to answer.
But, but, but.
I see what he's gonna say. Part of this is construction and so we didn't know what kinda houses we were gonna get and how much, any one house, because we don't have the houses.
By the way, as a manager, if I was running this, I would not accept this excuse. You have to know, you have to do your due diligence, how much things are cost, you can't just say, well, oh, we don't know how much, you need to budget.
I didn't say, I didn't say I know how much, because what we didn't have is the house to be able to price how much it's gonna be, so if you don't have the house.
So, then why do you budget?
Well, you budget what you think you're gonna do.
That's not true, but anyway.
Now, you give a better one.
Okay, give me an answer, yeah.
Well, first of all.
I, I want the technical answer.
I just wanna reject one word and that is excuse.
Yes.
Okay. We're not making excuses.
Okay.
Okay. One could legitimately say however, that since this was, uh, the, this, this fiscal year was the sixth through eighteenth month of the program, that it was a learning year. Okay? We didn't know whether we were gonna have two houses, four houses, or six houses, or one. And so, um, the bottom line is, is that the twelve months of fiscal year twenty-two uh, have helped us become a lot smarter now. And so, uh, we believe that our, our results, first of all, we didn't lose money. Okay? Uh, the, 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 the fund is solid, okay, we didn't lose money. So, but we did spend more money than we expected to because in the process of fixing the houses that we fixed during this fiscal year, ended up costing more money than uh, step up busy not go estimated that it would cost.
Okay, so my, my question is, even though we want over budget, I'm, I'm making the assumption we'll recoup that money once we sell those homes. So, that, that would be added to the cost of the house.
Thank you.
And that's why I was just to make sure this is clear. Thank you.
It's a self.
Thanks, Steve.
It's a self-funding situation, I mean.
Now, the, the, the long-term goal here is for this to be a revolving fund.
Okay.
That the money that we, the money we get from selling the houses is what we invest in fixing up the next one.
Thank you.
So, I have a question on the other funds. When we're talking about the American Rescue Plan and the Debt Service Fund, if we got it, why is it being red? Why is it considered as a loss? Is that, that's what red indicates, correct?
I'm sorry.
Or short, sorry, what loss? If you go on the other side of this thing. Yeah. So, if you look on the site, it says, you know, other funds, when you look at those, they're in red, so that means it's short, right? Correct?
No.
It's just saying it's a negative number. And the, like, the ARPA fund, we didn't set up an ARPA fund. So, we had to basically create the ARPA fund.
Right.
And then budget it by taking money from a different fund's budget. Which was miscellaneous grants, because we have about like five hundred thousand we budget in miscellaneous grants, just in case something, something, you know, is awarded. Um, but it, it wasn't, so we could take that budgeted amount from miscellaneous grants and use it to
So, there's not even more coming in as a question, okay, so.
That's right, and if you look at the um, overall general fund.
Right.
Okay, so, this is the general fund budget, okay, so these are the actual expenditures that have been accorded. So, our budgeted actual expenditures were eight million and change. Our budgeted act, or, excuse me, our actual expenditures were seven million and change. So, uh, the performance of the general fund was actually pretty darn good.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just questioning the color. Why is it, why is it red? No, I'm just wondering why is, why is it's being recorded as a, a short and not as a.
So, in, in the, in the, in the mayor council, okay, which shows a shortage of three eight hundred and change.
Right.
Okay. In that, in that line item, okay, that department, you actually spent more than you budgeted.
Right.
Okay? So, so that will show up as a loss.
Great, I get that.
Okay.
But where's the loss on this other side?
So, because there was no budget amounts, so there was a zero, so it shows as a loss because there wasn't a budget amount.
If you look down here, this is the offsetting, if the money came in from there and it ran into, into miscellaneous grants.
Okay, I'm just, okay, I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering why it was showing up as a loss when it doesn't.
And what happened there is that we actually created uh, that line item, say, the ARPA line item.
Right.
We created that during the fiscal year and then we transferred those funds out of the general fund and into that fund. So, you've got no budget number there because we made that, we made that uh, transfer of many year.
Right, I know, I just, I was just having a hard time grasping because, okay, we put money in there and that money's there. So, to me and my pig brain, that registers as it should be black.
But, but you are correct in this question.
Right, and the same goes with the debt service, you know, that's why, because, okay, there's money there, actual, and it equals, it just didn't make sense to me why it's saying it's short when it's.
Just numbers.
Well, it looks like a deficit, but it's not a deficit.
Yeah, and that's what, yeah, and that's.
So, this is, bottom line is, this is accounting that only auditors understand.
Yeah, no, it was just the color.
And because we are required by state law to get an audit every single year, and which she is preparing for right now, I'll be here next week.
Okay.
This is what we're doing.
No, like, like I said, it was just the, the color, because it's always been, oh, that means, you know, it's a loss, spent or blah, blah, when in reality, it's not.
I get that.
And that's what I wanted to clarify, because some people just said, well, gosh, you know, you ever spent four hundred fifteen thousand dollars, but we, that's it.
That's why it's better to be colored, right?
True. Next time, put it in green.
There you go.
I'll just highlight it.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, one more, here we go.
So, so Mayor asked about uh, of projecting um, the cost of the housing, so and so forth. So, this is the first time that we've done this to the housing? Okay, so that means that in our next fiscal year, you will have uh, history and be able to better project what um,
That's the plan.
Money that we need.
That's correct.
So, Mel, you heard that we're gonna make it really easy.
Well, that's why I ask, you know, when you ask questions, you just want to see what the other party's trying to confirm or affirm. Not to pick and find out what, what, and I'm sure uh, those things we learn from and make sure we, we take care of them. And, and thank you for explaining that about the Zoom, I appreciate your forwardness on this, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have one more question, please?
Okay.
Okay, so, then that's.
Well, help us.
So, is that, is that then gonna stay there? In the, is that given a line item, the Debt Service Fund and the American Rescue Plan, or is the American Rescue Plan line gonna go away?
Well, no, the American Rescue Plan line is going to be permanent.
Okay.
Um, once, once you approve this and Carrie makes the transfers, all of those will.
And then there's actually a budget line now for American.
Okay, that's why, that's why, so it is making.
It's actually in this year's budget, the one that you adopted.
You guys keep talking, then I have another question now.
Sorry, sorry.
It's her fault, she started, it was last one. And maybe Steve, I think, probably being the city manager, probably will have to take on this question. So, when we have the shortfall in, on those lines, because sometimes it's not fair for a department to do well, control the expenses, and then I, I know how that goes, sometimes, that, that happens in any organization. But like, let's say on the personnel, we ended up overspending. Will DVD go from now till the end of the fiscal year to see where we can do some cuts so you can balance that, or that's gonna be a permanent?
Well, in, in this particular case, and, and the, the, the technical answer to your question is, it depends.
Yeah.
Okay, now, think about this. Our personnel budget is extremely small, okay, it consists of one employee. And whatever expenditures we anticipate she's going to need to spend. In this particular case, it looks out of whack where if, if we would have charged that same investigative expense in fire, where the problem was.
Never would have showed up.
It would have never showed up as red.
So, then why was it technically, why was it charged to that department that's made the mistake that liable for this uh, situation?
Well, because that's how we account for things. And I would rather see it than not.
How can I help, our guys responsible for those investigations?
But the, but the investigation was for another department, wasn't for the personnel.
Right.
Uh, you're making the assumption you're responsible for this.
That department is responsible to undertake all investigations.
If you, if you have a complaint, personnel's.
Okay.
Complaint, you take it to the personnel department.
Yeah, yeah, but uh, I don't have the expense, I understand that.
The way we did it is more transparent than if we'd have done it the way you suggest. We want to be transparent, we want people to know that we're dealing with issues when they come to us.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, because the expense was incurred by the fire department, do, next, whatever.
No problem was.
Was not.
From the fire department, the expense was at the personnel department.
All right.
But why would you, why would you penalize that?
I'm not penalizing the fire department.
No, that's what you're saying, that they shouldn't be paying.
If you didn't understand.
All right, all right. The mayor's leading us to bed, and I'm going to take a motion for agenda item six, so we can move on.
I move for resolution R twenty-two dash eighteen, approving the transfer of budget amounts for the city of Bisbee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two budget.
Aye, second.
We have a motion, a second for item number six, which is approve resolution R dash twenty-two eighteen, approving the transfer of budget amounts within the city of Bisbee for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. Okay. Onto item, uh, we pass item seven, we'll move on to item eight, this is discussion of possible approval to request for proposal the replacement of the HVAC systems in the Copper Queen Library in Fire Station eighty-one and Fire Station eighty-two. Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we are asking to go out for, request for proposal for the services. Um, and these services will be paid by the uh, American Rescue Plan. And each one of these buildings uh, need upgrades to their HVAC systems. And even the library, I mean, has a hard time, they have, like, their heaters, but it still doesn't work as good as it should. So we're, we're going out to request proposal for what real, an actual HVAC company would uh, suggest for our, specifically for our building. Three different buildings.
We put that money aside in the.
Yes, that's been in the ARCA list since day one. And just to clarify, um, these three buildings are all using swamp coolers, none of them have air conditioning.
Yes. Swamp coolers aren't good for books.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
So, the money that's put aside, is it just for the estimate, or is it also for the initial completion of that?
We actually put a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars aside for the library system, which was an estimate given to us by uh, the uh, architectural firm who did the assessment of building a couple of years ago. So that's where we got that number. Um, and then, uh, just by estimating the space and and the requirements to cool that space and to heat that space in both of the fire stations, we came up with a hundred thousand dollar figure for the two fire stations.
Okay, so then the money's already set aside to do everything, not just.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm clarifying, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Will come back to us to approve that.
Right.
All right?
Just one question.
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned services, is that gonna be for the system or just services? Are you gonna replace the, are we gonna replace the entire system?
This is to replace and to replace, remove the existing and have a, a up, state-of-the-art kind of air conditioning system.
Okay, so it's replacement, not just services?
Yeah, and then, and, I'm sorry, but just to clarify a little bit further, we don't necessarily think we're gonna replace the existing systems the same way we did the last ones. We've got two huge swamp coolers on top of the library.
Okay.
Um, but those, the weight of those units pales in comparison to a replacement air conditioning condensing unit. And we don't believe that the structure of the roof will support the additional weight. So, part of what Public Works will be doing in this effort is having contractors say, okay, we we recommend this type of system, whether it's a split system or something different. But we really don't wanna put the additional weight on, on the library building. Or the other two buildings, for that matter.
I would ask that we try to make as much energy, the SEERs, as best as we can get.
Well, that's definitely an up call.
Yeah, just, all right, throw that in. Any other questions? A motion?
I move that we approve request for proposal of the replacement of the HVAC system in the Copper Queen Library, Fire Station eighty-one and Fire Station eighty-two.
Second?
A motion, a second for item number eight, this to go out for a proposal for replacement of the HVAC in the three city buildings, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Very none, ayes, have it, so much, thank you. Item nine, this is discussion and possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two dash eleven. Amending the City of Bisbee Code, Article seven point ten, light pollution and the Bisbee City, Bisbee zoning code Articles three, six, seven, and nine.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no real substantive changes since you considered this last time with Mr. Ballen and Mr. Seurat, who's here tonight. However, uh, because the mayor wanted to know in the definitions, definition M.
Nater?
Has been defined. So anybody who wants to know what a nater is, and that's the correct pronunciation, I, I will inject. A nater is, that's like glowy.
Sounds like something you do to your legs, get rid of the hair.
One is also interpreted as the center of the earth.
There you go, I do, I appreciate. We, uh, non.
You're not the only one who learned something.
Uh, more questions, uh, clarifications? Just for the public's knowledge, I just want to for some, answer some questions that have been given to myself and other council members, that this isn't a matter about going after your lights, I mean, where are the biggest pollution, polluters? And I think this is something that we as a city can do. What we're doing by putting this in place is asking as things change and upgrade and things burn out, that we, that you, that we need into this new code. We don't have any light police, we only have enough police to do what we need. We come here, a light policeman will run around, so that's what, that's what this is all about, is to try to, you know, work on this and make sure that we, uh, you know, we all enjoy the nice guy, I know I do, and uh, and I think that would be a, a, a good benefit for the whole city. Anyway, I do wanna clarify that. Any other questions or comments?
Just that when renovation occurs, that would be the time to do the upgrade.
Right.
Perfect time.
And I, I would like to, and I'm sure our people here that wanna go out and help promote this, that they can talk to ACE and get things in there that people can buy, that meet our codes and so on, so those replacements and new installations all meet that. That would be great to work with the, with the local hardware stores and so on, so that, that, that they're available for that.
And Mayor? In, in the process of designing the replacement for city hall, when we got the lighting part of the design, it's, it's, it's pretty clear now, unlike it was ten years ago, that night sky friendly, both interior and exterior, light fixtures are easily available now. And so, we had no trouble finding night sky compliant exterior lighting for the new building.
Drive by the new hospital construction building, it's a great example. So, it doesn't look dark, it's nice.
Right.
Just one question I have, I received from people who are more. What would be the, like, for example, I know we're not sending out there anybody to enforce and make people change their life, but what would be the cost, uh, approximately, percentage-wise, when you are replacing your light bulbs with, with the new one? Is there an idea on fixture, much difference will it be versus the?
Well, now you've asked me another question for which the answer is it depends.
Okay.
So, uh,
It's a good point.
There are, there are a couple of things that I usually tell people that simplify what needs to be done. Down is better than up. That's number one, okay? Number two, glow, not glare. Okay? Now, once you think about those concepts, just for a few minutes, you begin to understand what it takes now. So let's say, Mel, you wanna buy a porch light
Yeah.
in your house, okay? So your old porch light uh, is sitting there next to your doorway, and it, it has a fixture where the light bulb points up.
That's right.
And you've got a glass globe on it.
That's right.
Okay? That glares, it doesn't glow. And it's up, it's not down. Okay? So when you go over to B and D, looking at their front door light fixtures, you should easily be able to pick one out that faces down and make sure that it cuts off the light so that it all points down. And you will, by by now, it's getting really hard to find an incandescent light bulb. And so, the soft white incandescent, excuse me, the soft white LED bulbs have a color temperature of three thousand Kelvin. Three thousand Kelvin is acceptable for night sky friendly lighting. You don't have to know the temperature of the color, all you need to know is soft white. Okay? They've made it pretty easy now.
In answer to your thing, see, if you walk down any of your hardware, especially if they have big lighting sections, any more, the majority of them are going more towards that type of lighting. Uh, because so many different towns are, um, adopting the, the dark sky.
Yeah, the light bulb is not the issue, and I agree, because all of us.
It's the structure.
It's just, that's, that's the issue, the light bulb, we, we know, yeah, that's, it's just the fixture, that's, that's, that's the difference it's gonna be.
I don't think the fixtures, fixtures will be that much, uh, more expensive than what they were before.
I mean, most fixtures on that order are not
Right.
perceived in the first place.
Well, thank you.
So.
Anything else? This will be the first reading of this, so, notice of intent.
I, I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-two dash eleven, amending the City Bisbee Code, Article seven point ten, light pollution and Bisbee zoning code, Article three, six, seven, and nine.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-two dash eleven, amending the City Code seven point ten and the zoning codes Articles three, six, seven, and nine. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. Moving on to our last item, agenda item, this is a discussion, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two fifteen. This is amending the City of Bisbee Code, Article eight. This is business regulations by repealing and replacing Sections eight point nine, vacation rentals and short-term rentals. This is another one that we have the work session on, and uh, the only change that I would point out would be that the effective date is January one, twenty twenty-three, so that, uh, we can get some time to get the word out to everybody so that we aren't just dumping them on in thirty days.
Yes, Mayor, and also because we have to have a sixty-day period to publicize any new fee for business, has to be publicized on the city's website for sixty days, so we have to have that time period in there as well. And January first gives us that amount of time, plus the ability to have a fresh start at the beginning of the year, an easy, easy timeframe to, to be able to calculate compliance. I would also point out that, uh, some of the changes that I made in connection with the discussions that council brought up, I think one of the questions was what, what defines a short term as to the, the amount of time? That didn't change, I went back and verified that, you know, the, the definition of short-term rental has to be the same definition as what's provided in state statute. But you will notice it's, it's a owner-occupied residential home offered for transient use. And then if you look down further in definitions, transient is defined as the same meaning prescribed in ARS forty-two, fives, fifty, seventy, which is the tax ordinance, which provides very detailed definition of, of what transient use is. So there is a good definition as to what, what is defining this for the short-term rental. I did make some changes to the permit application. You'll see we had discussed one, the question came up with regards to parking, number of bed spaces. So I put in item number seven, the total, that when they submit for their for their permit, that they have to, uh, provide the following information. And so that will include the total number of available guest spaces and parking spaces for the property to be used as vacation rental, so they have to identify on their application, how many spaces for guests and for parking that they're going to have. Number eight, I put in verification that the owner of the property to be used as a vacation rental does not have any outstanding past due utility or other fees owed to the city. That was another concern in this race. The permit fee again is established by the council, by council resolution and fee schedule, that will be brought back to council uh, in December. We, we're gonna have uh, a couple of changes to the fee schedule to include this permit fee, which we listed as two hundred and fifty dollars, which is our current estimate as to what it will cost administrative time to process the permits, to do everything that has to be done for verification and for the the initial inspection of the property. The other thing that's gonna be coming to council, it's going to P and Z first, is gonna be the, the updates to the, uh, city's real property sales code, the process for selling city property or requesting to purchase city property. Part of that's gonna have an application fee, so that's gonna be amended to the fee schedule, so we're gonna bring those fee schedule changes at one time, so we're just doing one resolution for those additional fee schedules. So that's why we don't have a fee schedule resolution tonight for this, but it will be, and it's published on the city's website now, that it will be a two hundred and fifty dollar fee.
I, I have.
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead, Mel.
I had a, a call today from a, from a B and B owner, and she was concerned about the sex offender, uh, requirement check. And she, she said that, uh, you typically, she just gets the name of the person that's, that's gonna rent the place. She doesn't get the name of the other people that are gonna be there as guests. So how does she know, how can she verify those people that they're not sex offenders? Well, she can require that upon upon making that lodging reservation that they provide, just like you would have to if you get a, an airline ticket, you have to provide the name of all passengers, you have to provide the name of. So it'd be another stamp. And that of most, it's my understanding that most online agencies that handle those reservations can deduct those checks, and that's why it states that that it's either done by the individual or the, the agent, the booking agency. Right. But that is a state statute requirement as well. That's what I thought.
Okay. It's what they put in the state statute.
And when you, when you grant, they usually ask you all the guests.
And, and I have a, one question I had was probably for for our finance director. Business license, when, what's renewal? If we start these in January, will they always be January, year after year? That's fine with you, isn't June, whatever, when is business license that is?
Jay?
Yeah.
She'll probably be sending out the letters next week, or, you know, usually.
So they'll work in conjunction, they get a business license and their permit fee the same, okay, that's why I wanted to make sure we're on the same, same fee.
Unless somebody comes in
Mid-year.
To establish. But we, for the initial tranche of individuals that are going to pull a permit that currently run Airbnb or VRBOs, will likely get an upward amount of those in January.
Well, well, I guess my question was, I noticed on some of the others, that if you come in mid-year, then you adjust the fee. So what if you come in come in mid-year, then you adjust the fee, so what if you come in July and start in April and B, you pay, you're gonna pay two fifty, and it's gonna be again due on January?
We'll address that in the, in the fee schedule.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we can provide for appropriation on the fee schedule, and then a annual renewal fee as well.
So then, so then we're gonna be based on a calendar year, not a fiscal?
Right. That's when business license...
Yeah, most business license, however, calendar year, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to think forward on that one, that would be a good way to do it.
And most businesses do a calendar year, so they're fiscal year, unlike governments. They do, do one.
Yeah, we're the only ones who celebrate the New Year.
Or, or the February of the school, this is October. So, more questions or comments? So this is the initial, intention to, intent to pass, so.
Thank you.
I, I think this is a good way for us to get a handle on what, what we have, and hopefully be able to make sure they fit in well with the neighborhood, so. I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two dash fifteen, amending the City of Bisbee Code, Article eight, business regulations by repealing and replacing Sections eight point nine, vacation rentals and short-term rents.
Second.
I have a note, I have a motion and a second to approve, item number ten, ordinance O dash twenty-two fifteen. I have a roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes six, zero, thank you. And, as our business, the city manager report, hold your mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, only a couple of items here tonight. Earlier tonight, we talked about entering into agreement to sell the Hillcrest apartment building, and, which is good news, and a little bit more good news, you'll recall that a couple of months ago, that the Saginaw subdivision was named as a colonius, and that makes us, makes money available for us to do home repairs, and we went about the task in a very, very short window, with, with the help of the mayor and our two ward representatives from Ward One, to hustle up applications for, for this money. Well, I'm gonna mention her.
Okay.
We actually have, what, five applications or four?
We have five approved, and we have waiting lists of three or four that are not done. There are three pre-approved, but on a waiting list.
Okay, so Monday morning, that's yesterday, I got a call from CEGO, and they had, the state had a specific amount of money, I think it was one point nine million, that it could spend for these for the entire state, okay? Believe it or not, only a fraction of that money was even requested. And a, a, a big slug of it was right here in Bisbee. So the Department of Housing called Keith over at CEGO and said, we'll give you money for ten more houses. So, we're back out on the street as of today. You heard what Melissa said about a waiting list, so those people will be the first ones we contact, we'll get those applications completed, anybody, and, and, you know, we also get, what, three months this time?
Yeah.
Instead of three weeks?
Three or four, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, we've got the luxury of time now, so that people can actually qualify and complete these applications. So that brings the possibility that we are going to end up in this year's program with fifteen houses. So, now, there's gonna be some work involved, and, and Joe and Melissa are gonna do it. But, and Keith, and, and of course, we may come back to our ward representatives and ask for a little bit more assistance, because we know that the, the neighbors trust their ward reps before they trust bureaucrats, and so we're more than anxious to get back together with you and, and do this again, and, and then, hopefully, three months from now, we'll be talking about the fifteen homes that we're gonna be giving fifteen thousand dollars to for home repairs, and I was confident a week ago that five houses was gonna make a big impact on Saginaw. I think fifteen houses is gonna make a huge impact.
Change it.
On Saginaw, and, and that, given, given that, plus the one house in the workforce housing program that's already been completed and sold, and the other house that's on D Street that is this far away from being completed and will be put out for, for auction, and the fact that we've actually got a waiting list, it's not a big late waiting list, but we have a waiting list for people to buy these homes. And on top of that, not in Saginaw, but on Cochise Row, Joe Ward issued the certificate of occupancy for that house this morning. So, we're hoping that the people that we have on the waiting list will result in Cochise Row selling quickly, and then we'll be taking that money, of course, and we'll be putting it back in that account, and that will be available to build another house, or repair another house.
There's two lots on...
We have two more lots in Saginaw, and we'll be talking with Step Up Bisbee Naco about how to proceed with one or both of those at this point, and, but they're both vacant lots that the city owns, so, so there wouldn't be new construction in this particular case. So, I think we're kind of out of actual lots with houses on them right now. So, we do have a couple more lots over in Warren, but I kinda like the state of Saginaw neighborhood for now, because we're making such great progress over there, and I think the impact on that is gonna be much greater, like, in the long run, and, and the houses will be probably more affordable for the workforce that we're trying to get the houses fixed up to sell to, so, so there's that. And, and we are very, very pleased with the progress so far, even though we were asked to make a presentation last month to a joint legislative committee, which was, which we were all prepared for, which they canceled on us two hours before it started. We do feel, however, that since we, we did send our presentation materials to the committee, that they have been paying just a wee bit more attention to us than has been happening in the past, and, you know, for, for those of you who feel a little bit frustrated that we can't do this faster, I'm right there with you. I wish we could work faster than we did, you know, part of it's our own limitations, part of it's limitations on us under state law, part of it is the tax credit program that we all know has failed us last June and hopefully won't this next June, and so, you know, the, I think everybody has a commonly expressed goal that because we have an issue not just in Bisbee, but pretty much everywhere that housing prices and rental prices have skyrocketed to a point where people find it difficult to live, where live and work in the same town, we're chipping at it very slowly, but we're chipping at it, and hopefully fixing these houses in Saginaw is a big push towards moving that whole process forward. I just have one more thing, Mayor, and I wanted to, I know, we began the evening having a moment of science, silence for Albert Hopper, just a, a point of personal privilege, since over the years that I have been here, I've had the opportunity to work with Albert on a couple of projects. One of my favorite projects, quite frankly, was the gift shop, the Queen Montour. Not only is it a very nice place, but it has become a very real profit center for the city, and, and it's doing everything that it was intended to do. Not everybody liked Albert, okay? I had my days when I didn't like Albert, okay? But I will say this, Albert never held a grudge, Albert always came back, Albert always did the right thing, and he was here as, as our architect of record on the rebuild of City Hall, he was obsessed with getting it right.
I'm done.
Well, the thing, the thing that chokes me up is every time we have a meeting, he ended it up with, "We need to get this done to help these employees have a nice place to work." He said that every single time. So, that leaves us with finding a replacement. We don't need an architect anymore, okay? Architecture's done, we will need someone to manage the project on our behalf, okay? We were planning on having Albert do that, but obviously he won't be, he won't be here to do it now. So, I have some ideas of some people that we can retain to fill in that role. If there is anybody that, you know, it doesn't have to be an architect, it should be someone with a technical background and, and good background in building construction, that's the key, and someone who will write the contractors every day to make sure they do the right thing, so that when we get done, we have the right thing. So, so that's, that's our next move. Now, we, we are in the process right now with K, E, and G of doing the dirt work and the final cutting for the building. At the moment, Matt's gonna be in charge watching those guys until we can find somebody, that's gonna be a relatively quick process that doesn't require a whole lot of technical expertise, but we'll just make sure that when they're done, we're at proper, proper compaction, thank you, for that process, and, so, anyway, R I P Albert, we'll miss ya. It's all admirable.
Just trying to still soak in on you. All right, thank you all.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second to adjourn, oh. Well, since yours came up and there was no questions or problems, it's, it's...
You're good to go.
Good, ask a minute.
So, do I just get with the city to get my number?
That has to be turned in for approval as well, so your permit for the event was approved.
Yeah.
That's liquor, so it...
So, we have a motion and a second, we'll talk to you.
Yeah.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those bidders in front, they say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.